Do we have mics on? Oh wow, we're loud today. Okay. And we'll all rise for the class to leave.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may standing for a moment of reflection for all those in harm's way and all of our military overseas. All right. A statement of advance notice. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting. In the notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January eighth, 2024. Such scheduled and notice of meetings is posted at the municipal building, the Mount Olive Library, the Board of Education offices, and the six schools was submitted to the Daily Record for Publication on January ninth, 2024, and was filed with the Clerk of Mount Olive, Hampshire on January ninth, 2024. I direct that this announcement be entered into the minutes of this meeting. Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Orzillo?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
And I'd like to take a motion to move the approval of the minutes. Can I have one, Mrs. Figuera? On two, two point one and two point two. I motion to approve minutes on two point one and two point two. Do we have a second?
Second.
And can we have a roll call? Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
And do we have any communications or petitions to the superintendent and the members of the board?
No.
Anyone else? Okay, I, I do. So on about February 31st, the Board of Education received correspondence from Mr. Shalachi expressing his desire to rescind his resignation. As we know, Mr. Shalachi resigned from his position effective immediately at the prior board meeting.
Excuse me. Could you talk close to the mic?
Sure.
Because they are, they're not picking up. Yes, but the community is not picking up.
Okay. No problem. Thank you, Mrs. Melendez. And Mrs. O'Neil, is it picking up on the? Okay. Thank you. So I just wanted advice that the goal of this board is to properly follow our policies and procedures and to seek legal advice and not haphazardly handle the board business. Now that Mr. Shalachi has submitted his written request to withdraw his resignation, according to case law and NJ SBA guidance, they dictate that the resignation that he stated did become effective at the time he stated it, which was the prior meeting, so it was effective immediately. There is no requirement for a board vote. The Mount Olive Board Policy 143 does not establish a minimum time period to post the notice of vacancy of a board position. The board policy states the board secretary shall promptly notify the president of a vacancy to be filled by the board. The president shall inform all board members. The board will give public notice of the vacancy, invite any qualified person to submit a written request for consideration of his or her candidacy for the vacancy. The board may also require candidates to submit a resume with their written request. Also, there is no minimum time in case law statute of regulations. Thus, the board is not required a number, minimum number of days to post the vacancy and no minimum number of days to give the candidates to apply for the position. Thus, there is no reason for us, for the board, to have a resolution on the agenda and also therefore the resignation became effective immediately and cannot be rescinded at this time. Therefore, this does create a vacancy. However, Mr. Shalachi, we're more than welcome and we do welcome you and encourage you to apply to be considered for the vacant position to be filled by the board in the future, as well as anyone else in the public who wishes to do so. Letters of interest will be required to be submitted to our board secretary, Ms. Jones, by March eighth at four P M. The intent is to resolve this matter as swiftly, swiftly in the best interest of this district as we can. And with that, we are going to move on to reports and discussions. Um, can I, do we have any student liaisons?
Good evening. So the high school has definitely been really busy as usual. So to start off, our sophomores are having a general assembly in order to, um, class rings, which we sent out to parents soon to order. Our senior classes will be having a class meeting on scholarships on March eighth. As much as I feel I was just a freshman walking to the high school, our seniors and their parents have been just sent down email about ordering cap and gowns. That must be ordered by March twenty eighth and Ms. Frye, whose email was attached to the letter sent out, is our contact with any questions we may have. With the end of the year getting closer every day, so is the last day to order yearbooks online. The last day to order is February twenty eighth to be guaranteed a yearbook. Thankfully, our high school does order a few extras for those who missed the deadline, um, but once those are gone, they're all gone. Um, I know our yearbook is working very hard to get, put these together, so definitely don't want to miss out. This information, of course, has been sent out to our parents and students. The parent club as well is holding a Marauder Nation apparel sale, which of course has been sent out and will be going on until March sixth.
Winter sports are winding down now, bringing the close to a very successful season for all of our winter teams. In particular, our track and wrestling team saw numerous athletes qualify for the state championships for their respective sports, and some even made it to the national level, especially in our track department. Two of these athletes in particular, Natasha Redman and Morgan Rarson, smashed multiple meets and school records for their respective events. So great job to all of our athletes. On Thursday, February fifteenth, these athletes were celebrated at our winter pep rally hosted by student council. This was our first winter pep rally in years, so we are very excited for it, and it was without a doubt a huge hit. We held a spirit week in the days leading up to it to really hype up the energy and get students involved. And at the pep rally itself, this energy was definitely tripled. The forty minutes were packed with fun with friendly competitions between our classes and performances from our cheer teams. The freshmen took the win in our frozen t-shirt contest and the seniors clutched the victory in our three-point contest. However, I think the true highlight of the afternoon had to be a tie between our drill team showcase that got the crowd going absolutely wild, as well as the race between Mr. Ben Vaddy and Mr. O'Connor, which they ran dressed in sumo wrestler suits. In between all of this fun, not only were our winter sports captains given the chance to discuss all the successes from their seasons, but we also made sure to highlight the accomplishments of all of our other school extracurricular activities, including our music departments, robotics, clubs, drill teams, and more. Overall, I think all of student council can agree that this pep rally was a huge success and was everything we could ask for. Now, we all wait as our spring sports are gearing up and getting ready for success. Speaking of getting ready, our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors have all had scheduling meetings for next year, and if your student has not, they are wrapping up in the next couple of weeks. In the music world, we had two students perform at the NJ Music Educators Association Honor Modern Band in Atlantic City. These two juniors were Lincoln Vera and Arabella Macula, so great job to these two. In preparation for their upcoming spring performance, our drama club also hosted a workshop with Konstantin Morales, who was a former lead in the Broadway musical Rock of Ages, as well as American Idol finalist. Tickets for our very own performance of this musical are on sale now, and this performance is being shown on March twenty first, second, and third. We hope you are all able to come out and see all the great work our drama students have been putting in.
Now, with February coming to an end, I couldn't think of a better way than a student-first staff basketball game, which will be hosted by Mount Olive Diversity Equity Inclusion Council tomorrow night starting at five o'clock in the gym. Then, in our robotics world, they are participating in the district event, which they don't have to move the robot too far because we are holding it here at Mount Olive High School this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Busy weekend for them. Then to kick off March, on March seventh, Guidance is holding a mini night college fair at Mount Olive High School's Commons from six thirty to eight thirty. Then on March twelfth, our National Art Society Invitational will begin at six thirty in the PAC lobby. It'll be amazing time as not only will Mount Olive be showing off their art, but local schools around the area. Thank you. If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board's end? And Dr. Bangia, the superintendent's report?
I'm going to be short and sweet. Look out for an email from me tomorrow launching our strategic planning initiative. Our kickoff meeting will be on March nineteenth at the middle school, so please look out for that email. We are asking people to RSVP to the meeting to ensure that we can accommodate everyone's interest. Thank you.
And do we have anything from the personnel committee?
Uh, no report this time.
Thank you. Anything from Curriculum and Technology Committee?
Uh, no, we'll meet next week.
Anything from Finance and Operations?
Nope, we meet Monday.
And anything from Policy and Governance?
No report at this time.
Thank you. And do we have any subcommittees and/or Parent Teacher Association liaison reports that would like to come to the mic?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I am Becky Park. I'm the president for Chester M. Stevens Elementary School for our SCA. I've been on the board since two thousand nineteen. I'm also a substitute aide for the district. Uh, I don't usually attend a lot of the meetings. This is actually my one for the year that I usually attend. I have two children and travel hockey, so I'm all over the place. When the SCA comes into the building at CMS, we're known as the Fun Squad. The kids light up because they know that means it's time for super fun events. This year, we have done a walk-a-thon in September that we raised around five thousand dollars for kindness. To date, the funds created and continue to support the Positive Incentive Behavior Plan, CMS, caught making spectacular choices. The kids receive prizes for kind acts in the building. We did a trunk-or-train in, in the school in October and collected over four hundred and fifty bags of candy donated from our families. We used them during that two-hour event. The community was also included, to which we had a lot of teams from Turkey Brook come over after practices. In November, we held our Fall in Love with Books book fair. It was a regular book fair where we sold a little over eleven thousand dollars. In December, we did a holiday shop at the school. We sold over fifteen thousand dollars worth of items. The kids enjoyed making, uh, or purchasing the secret items for them to take home to their families. In February, we had an assembly for the kids through Zuforia. Samantha came out and showed the kids different animals and helped them see and learn about them such as snakes, cockroaches, lizards, and frogs. For February, each child went home with a small gift from the SCA for Valentine's Day. It was a small eraser, bookmark, and pencil. Also in February, we held our Winter Book Fair of Love. Each one of the kids in the school went home with a free book donated by our Scholastic Dollars and the SCA for twelve ninety-nine or under. We actually were able to give every child in the school a free book equalling up to seven hundred and fifty students. First year, we were able to actually get all children involved. At the beginning of March, we're giving each child a Dr. Seuss pencil for Read Across America. Also in March is one of our big events at CMS. We are hosting on March thirteenth our annual Rock and Roll-a-thon. The kids are learning eight dances to do during their special time in the gym. With the St. Patrick's Day theme and all kids receiving a free necklace, we are raising money for Officer Bill, our security guard, as well as four Mount Olive police officers and tentatively the Flanders First Aid Squad, providing medical support for the ride. They will be riding in the Unity Tour in May down to D C. We will start the tour, they will start the tour in Florham Park and ride bikes down to D C for a candlelight vigil and dinner for those officers that have lost their lives in the line of duty. The fundraiser is one hundred percent going towards their cause. We have brandies generously donating pizzas for the officers during Rock and Roll-a-thon, as well as Sunday's ice cream is generously donating dessert treats to the officers as well. The four officers and Officer Bill will be in the gym dancing all day, so if any of you can make it, please join us. We are also looking to get the senior cheerleaders from the high school connected to CMS to come dance with our youngest kids in the afternoon. Again, all the proceeds are going to them and their ride. Uh, if anyone would like to donate, it's Venmo at CMS-sca. We're accepting donations till the end of March. In April, we have, we have our third book fair, which is our buy one, get one free to build up for summer reading, as well as our annual cultural night, April twenty fifth. I'm going to go just a little bit further because like I said, this is the only one I'm able to make it to. In May, we have Teacher Appreciation Week, as well as our full school dance, which has now been relocated to CMS on May seventeenth, plus the start of all our fifth grade events. This year, the four elementary schools have really come together and are working great trying to make things similar for our fifth graders, as well as all of our school events. The other three ladies that I have been meeting with have been the best to work with, and we are all working hard to get things in unison so that for all future events, everyone knows that schools are not different. Couldn't ask for a better group of presidents to work with. In June, we have so many other events going on, but I know that Dr. Bangia really wants to know our big surprise event for CMS that will be held on June third. I was debating about giving the information tonight or making Dr. Bangia wait a little bit longer, but here goes. This year, CMS has been focusing on a circus theme for their events around the building. With that being said, on June third, CMS will be holding a large carnival in our school, in our school field. All kids will be attending the event and enjoying two trailers with carnival games, six games total, an ice cream truck, four bounce houses, dancing, and of course, we cannot forget our dunk tank. The kids will get to win, the kids will get to win prizes playing the carnival games and lots of other fun with the other events. For the dunk tank, we will be having Ms. Masulo, our gym teacher, Officer Bill, and Mrs. Smith, Smetreski, our fourth grade teacher, up for dunking. The kids are going to have a blast, and we're working hard to make sure everything is planned for the event. We do have other events going on in June, but we will save those for our monthly meeting. Uh, let me know if you have any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Huh? Did we need her closer than mine? Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Amy Merini. I am, um, the president of CPAG, which stands for the Special Education Parent Advisory Group. We're code-driven group that collaborates with the district on anything pertaining to systemic things that are related to our special needs population. We meet on the second Tuesday of every month, and we are always, always, always looking for more parent volunteers and more parent engagement. Um, we have a lot of things, and so we always are looking for more, um, friendly faces. Um, I did speak last, um, last time that I was about to send out a survey. Um, sadly, I only got eleven responses, but it helps to guide.
There we go. Okay, there.
Um, I did have, um, eleven replies to our email that I sent out, um, just trying to see what, um, our current members were interested in with regards to our special needs population. And so it's going to help, um, guide us for next steps with regards to like where we'll go with, with that. Um, in February, we had two meetings, um, because of the school closure due to the snow day that fell on our meeting day. So we actually wound up flipping that meeting to be a parent-only meeting, um, which I have to speak for special services about some of the concerns that came about, so, you know, nothing. Um, so that was, it, it's good to just have the parents come and speak as a group together without any, like, staff involved because that way we kind of, you know, find out where some of those systemic issues may actually, um, fall. Um, on the twentieth of, of February, we did, um, we were lucky enough to have our, um, presenter was able to flip and come on that day. And so we had, um, Mr. Roche from the high school come and speak about transition, um, from the high school to, you know, after-school life, basically into adulthood. Um, he did share a lot of wonderful resources and talked about the process in Mount Olive and how, um, he's learning along the way, um, with regards to how, um, to help guide the students and the families to learn about what resources are available out in the community to make sure that when they are eighteen and twenty-one that they are set up to be able to receive and be supported as they need. Um, the director, uh, actually Sharon Sayzak also, um, shared with us the, um, lots of moving pieces, um, within the district that I had trouble making notes on, but, um, one of the big things that was my big takeaway was, um, that Choose to Include Week will be March eighteenth to twenty-second, and there's some really fabulous things that they have planned between speakers for different age ranges and different supports and different, like, just a lot of different really amazing things. And so, um, I'm excited because our next meeting is March twelfth, and I was able to secure the, um, Morris County Special Child Health Services to come and speak to us, hopefully to provide some information for kind of all of the students, not just for some of the ones that are transitioning. So hopefully we'll be able to kind of really talk about the different resources that are available and kind of keep that conversation going. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Am I close enough?
You're good.
Okay. Okay, um, my name is Nikki Odison. I'm, uh, president at Tins Road PTO. Um, I just wanted to go over a couple of things that we are headed into, uh, what we're calling March Madness at Tins Road School. We have, uh, several events coming up in the next couple of weeks. Um, first up is, uh, Pretzel Day on Friday. So we do a monthly pretzel sale with, uh, Philly Pretzel in Hackettstown, and it's just a fun way to, um, you know, to break up the months for the kids. Uh, the students have the opportunity to purchase a pretzel. We upcharge just a slight bit. So each pretzel sale doesn't raise a lot of money. We call this a fundraiser instead of a fundraiser because even though it's a little bit of a time, it does add up. So the money that we raise from pretzel sales for the course of the year will pay for like our upcoming assembly in April. This past Friday, we hosted our second Tins Gives Back Family Volunteer Opportunity. Uh, we had fifty members of the TRS community come, kids and their parents and younger siblings. Uh, we had fifty members of the TRS community come, kids and their parents and younger siblings, and we had a lot of Tins Road School alumni come back to volunteer and get some volunteer hours with us. So together, we, um, we packed and decorated a hundred and twelve breakfast bags that we donated to Nurish New Jersey for part of their Rise and Shine Breakfast Bag Program. Actually had the pleasure of delivering them today out to Morris Town, and they were so appreciative. Um, the kids were very excited. They, I was, you know, we started and I was like, okay, you know, how long is this gonna take? And they were so into it, and by the time we finished, they were like, can we do two hundred next year? And I was like, yes, yes, we can do two hundred next year. So, um, I've already spoken with Mrs. Farben, Mrs. White, and Mrs. Miller, who are spearheading our Tins Gives Back volunteer, um, program, and, um, they're on board for that as well. So our final activity, um, of the year, I'm sorry, there's two more. We have our Pancake Breakfast coming up on Saturday, March ninth. So if you haven't bought tickets to the Pancake Breakfast, uh, please join us. It's up at Applebee's at, um, up at the ITC. It's from eight to ten. Uh, tickets are ten dollars, and a portion, of course, goes to Applebee's for, you know, supplies and staff. But we receive a portion of, um, the ticket price as well, and that money will be rolled back into the Tins Give Back, uh, program so that we can fund future efforts. Okay, I already talked about that, but the Pancake Breakfast has twenty-six-plus staff members joining us. So I can't tell you how appreciative I am of the Tins Road School staff. They show up, they, they come out, they give up time with their families on the weekends to spend time with our families, and the Applebee's Pancake Breakfast is no exception. Um, we sent out the email, and again, we have twenty-six-plus staff members who are coming out to serve pancakes, so we hope that people will join us. Our next PTO meeting is a virtual meeting. We did have to change the date, so we had to move it up to Monday, March eleventh. It is going to be virtual, so if you can, please join us on the eleventh. On the fourteenth, we have Pie Day. Um, I know that Becky talked about Branda's, and they are so good to our community and our schools. They're putting together again, uh, make your own pizza kits for us. So again, this is a fundraiser. We don't make a lot of money on each pizza kit, but all of these dollars add up, and it allows us to provide ninety percent of our programs that we offer at Tins Road School are free to families. So this is one of the things that we do, um, over the course of the year, uh, to raise some of those funds. So parents have the opportunity, families have the opportunity to purchase pizza kits, and then on Pie Day, three fourteen, they go home, they make their pizza kits, they post pictures. It's just a fun family activity. But it's open to the public as well, so if you're interested in purchasing pizza kits, please do. Um, and then on the fourteenth as well, we have our First Aid, uh, AED and CPR certification that's being offered at Tins, um, through the district. So if anybody's interested in getting certified, it's, um, it's open to everyone, uh, in the Tins Road School community. Um, if they want to be certified, there's a fifty-dollar fee for the certification, and it's good for two years. So I will be there. Um, we're gonna do an early pizza night and then, and then head over to, uh, to be certified. We also have our Glow Dance coming up on Friday, um, three fifteen, or that's at the Mount Olive Middle School. Currently, we have about two hundred tickets for, um, um, two hundred tickets sold. We have room for a couple more. Uh, we sold out last year, so this is a big event for us. The Wizards game is also coming up on, um, Sunday, three twenty-four. Uh, thank you to the middle school for hosting and organizing this year, and they have generously opened it to all the elementary schools and the high school as well, and a portion of each ticket sold. If you do the drop-down box and you click on which homeschool you are, uh, four dollars from every ticket goes to the homeschool. So that's also helping to offset the costs. And then, of course, we head into spring break, so we have a busy couple of weeks at Tins, but all, all fun and exciting stuff. Um, I, I'm sorry, just one more thing. Um, speaking of the staff, I don't know if anybody's been on our Facebook page, but, um, we posted our masked readers, so if you haven't had a chance, uh, please head over there and take a look. Uh, the Kickoff to Read Across America Week, last week and this current week, probably about twenty staff members have masked up and read a book, videotaped themselves, and then they play them in homerooms for all the students, and the students have an opportunity to guess which teachers it is. I've heard tremendous feedback that the students are loving it, and, um, I just can't thank all the teachers at Tins enough, because anytime we have an idea, they're a hundred percent on board. So huge shout-out and thanks to them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Stansberry. I'm the president of the Mount Olive Administrators and Supervisors Association, so I thought I'd give you an update on some of our activities, uh, since, uh, the beginning of the school year. But I just wanted to point out that Gabby got accepted to the United States Military Academy of Crete. So, uh, we've been meeting with our executive committee and our membership as a whole, and we just wanted to let you know about some of the, uh, activities that we're going to be involved in, uh, for the remainder of the school year. We are donating fifty dollars per elementary school for their end-of-year fifth-grade field day. So we'll be giving those out to the, uh, the PTOs and PTAs. At the district-level science fair on March sixteenth, we have, I think, a hundred and sixty registrations for that. It's gonna be a huge day at the high school, and we're looking forward to it. The Mount Olive Administrators and Supervisors Association will be giving away a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar, uh, summer sneak camp registration scholarship. So that's going to take place on the sixteenth. We're gonna be offering that up as part of the festivities at the closing ceremonies when they announce the award winners. And then, of course, we'll be building up for our senior scholarships at the Senior Awards Night in June. But we just want to give you an update on, uh, your administrative team's support of our students and our programming, uh, within the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other, um, liaison or subcommittee parent, uh, committee report?
Hi, Jim.
Oh, there we go.
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, with the computers down, I didn't have my notes, um, but this was from the, uh, last planning board. Um, so they're reevaluating the master plan for the entire town, um, specifically the Home Goods area. I'm sure you guys are all wondering what's going on with that. Um, so it is going to be turned into a mix of fifty-five and older apartments with, um, storefronts. So, um, it, it was important to know that, just to know that there, it's not going to raise our, um, children population. Um, but, um, I think it's gonna have, uh, definitely, I think it's three stories?
I think that is.
I think three stories, hundred units, um, some affordable housing, and, like I said, lots of different stores, so it'll be exciting. Um, and the reason everybody's asking why didn't the supermarket go in there and, and not across the street building? Um, the Home Goods area is rented, and the gentleman that wanted to build a supermarket wanted to own. So that is the big answer for, um, not turning that back into a supermarket. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? Any other subcommittee liaison or PTA reports? No? Um, we'll move on to the Board President's Report, and at the moment, I wanted to introduce, um, you know, the elephant in the room, sorry. Um, the board's new attorney, Mr. John Geppert from Skorinci Hollenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Glad to be here.
I also wanted to just, you know, address again the elephant in the room. This board this year, our goal is to follow policy, to remain transparent. At times, at times, that also means, you know, there's conversations that are had. There's people that have goals or intentions of their own. The board's goal is to do what is best in the, you know, eyes of the district and the, the children and for the community that, you know, elected us. So there are times that, look, there are, people wanted to put forth a bill, or they want to put forth a resolution, and I remain transparent from the beginning of this year. I had conversations with each and everyone, except for one individual I was unable to get a hold of. I disclosed to the superintendent and to the former attorney that there was an intention from some members that they wanted to replace the attorney. My only ask as the board president was that they do so in the proper manner, whether that be through committee, whether that be through RFP, whether that be through a resolution that's walked onto this pious, we've had this before, it is not the first time. However, if they need assistance in ensuring that they do that properly, that is part of my role as the board president. It is not the easy role. It is not always taken the favorite, you know, avenue for looking at what every single member of our board wishes. That is not always the manner in which, which this position has to act. This position has to act as a liaison to ensure everyone either has the information that they require, which is why each and everyone had a conversation, and I disclosed that with them of people's intentions. You know, whether it is viewed from the public in a different manner, I understand. It is hard, we sit here, there's certain conversations we can't share with the district or with the members of the public. There are items that remain confidential. There's, you know, closed session conversations. There's ethics that we have to follow. There's confidentiality, you know, confidentiality we have to follow. So, you know, I understand sometimes the public doesn't always know the whys or the reasons, or they don't know things ahead of time. I understand that, and I understand the perception too. But I also want to say, you know, in the, you know, act of transparency that, you know, it is in the business of, you know, our, our context of being open and honest then, you know. So let me just say first, I don't carry water for anyone. Never, nor do I wish to ever, you know. There are men and women that came before us that sat in these seats, you know, and they blazed the path. They've set this district up for success. They, some of them still sit side by side with us. Some of them did last week that I truly honor. You know, the role is harder than even a council member. I've had some of them advise me of that. The decisions we make again from these seats are in the best, you know, interest of our district. They are not personal decisions, trust me. They are not. They are not in the interest of a puppet master. They are not in the interest of a special interest group or political stance. No, not at all. And that is the example we have to set for our students. These decisions are made without personal opinions or aspirations. They're made for the purpose of business decisions. These are business decisions. These are contracts that must be upheld. They have clauses in them, and they are, you know, vendors are, are terminated all the time. I've been, you know, on the other side of that receiving end as a vendor, you know. Unfortunately, you know, the goal for us as well is to ensure that we're receiving the proper, you know, advice. And if our questions aren't being asked, some people are very frustrated, and how are we supposed to make the proper votes and decisions from this seat if we don't receive the proper responses that we need to and the information? Then we're doing you, the public, no, no service at, at all, you know. The issue is sometimes we're not all going to agree. We're not all going to get along either, you know. Let's not put falsehoods out there either, you know. Let's do, each of us may come from a different position. Each of us may represent a different sector of this town. That's what makes democracy amazing, and that's the example that the children have to see. You might have a different view than I. We may not agree on the same thing. We can agree to disagree. And emotions get the best of us completely at times, which I think is what happened last week. And, you know, deter some of our better judgment, you know, our emotions then take, you know, over what we were voted to do here. And that is to represent this community. We have so many demographics. It's a beautiful thing, and I think this board needs to represent that. We're not all gonna say yes at the same time. We may say no at the same time. We may have different views, different yeses and no's. You know, at the end of the day, let me just close out with, you know, this is the end of Black History Month. You know, I make my poor daughter listen to, you know, Kobe Bryant every morning. She hates it in the morning. She's about sick of it. She's like, I have to listen to him one more time with his Mamba mentality, but, you know, each of us has to look in the mirror. Do we say, did I do something better each day at the end of our day to improve ourselves? You know, it means trying to be the best version of ourselves, trying to be the best version that this board can be, and it means every day trying a little bit better. And if that also means taking lessons from the public and listening to, to the adversity, the people that come be- before the mic, those who want, you know, a vote of no confidence, take the lesson and learn it. That is my goal at least, and I would hope each of us does that, not just as board members, but as community members, as parents, as teachers. We improve each day. That's the end goal. Lessons learned. Sometimes we rise above it. Sometimes we can, you know, look to work, work, move forward and work together. That's about all I have. And from that, we're gonna move to public comments. The public may comment on action items, and action items only. Please note, you will have opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak as, you know, on any of, uh, items. But these are just about, um, board action items that are listed on the agenda. So you may comment on any action item prior to the board discussion. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments, they must be done so in a respectful manner. No abusive or obscene comments will be tolerated. And please also, when you're speaking to the mic, please get close, um, so that the, the script can pick up for you. Some people aren't able to fully follow that one. So I open it up, the mic up to anyone on action items only.
Uh, Brian Gallagher, one-three-five Crenshaw Drive. Uh, I'd like to ask the board, ask that the board table action item ten-point-two, uh, ten-point-two, due to its connection and amendment of previous action item fourteen-point-two from the February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four board meeting. This request is being made due to the possibility that action item fourteen-point-two passed on February twelfth may have violated one or more sections of NJSA eighteen-A twelve-dash-twenty-four-point-one, with the possibility that the violation or violations were committed by one or more board members. The New Jersey School Ethics Commission meets tomorrow, February twenty-seventh. However, the agenda for that meeting has already been set. I would ask that this board hold off on any further actions that directly relate to the February twelfth action item listed as fourteen-point-two until a minimum of March twenty-sixth, which is the next School Ethics Commission meeting, or later if needed to see if the board is notified to any school ethic act violation determinations, rulings, or inquiries. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Can you just, um, give to our, um, board secretary just the clause that you were citing, NJSA fourteen-point-
Do you want me to read it or just show it?
You can read it.
Yeah.
So we can make a note of that. We like to do our homework.
NJSA eighteen-A colon twelve-dash-twenty-four-point-one. If you need the sections, it's A, C, E, and F.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to comment on action items? All right, we're gonna move along then. We are going to move on to action items. Can I get a motion for the approval of the monthly expenditures from, uh, Mrs. Melendez?
I present a motion, uh, for the approval of the monthly expenditure reports, uh, section six-point-one through six-point-eight.
Do we have any comments or questions from the board? We'll take a roll call then. Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
And we're gonna move on to personnel act- uh, action items, seventeen-point-one through, uh, seven-point-one through seven-point-one-nine. And personnel actions, Miss Aquino?
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, personnel action items seven-point-one through seven-point-nineteen.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? No? Then we have none. Um, let's take a roll call, please, Ms. Jones. Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
I abstain from anything that has to do with, um, my son's, um, first last name and yes to everything else.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes, and, um, we look forward to our new vice principal at the middle school.
And we'll move on to curriculum and technology, eight-point-one and eight-point-two. Miss, uh, Fenton?
Thank you. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to approve, uh, CNT eight-point-one to eight-point-two.
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call. Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
And we'll go to Finance and Operations Action Items nine-point-one through nine-point-three. Um, Miss Fitzgerald?
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, person-.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to make a motion to approve action items 9.1 through 9.3.
Second. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Just to be clear, 9.3 for the public, that that is being funded through a rod grant and it's not the budget or the taxpayer. Action item 9.3, just to be clear to the public, that is being funded out of the rod grant and the budget or the taxpayer.
Any other questions or comments from the board? We'll take a roll call. Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Abstain.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yeah, yes.
And we're going to move to administrative action items, 10.1 and 10.2. And we have, let's see, Mr., let's see, we'll jump over to, yeah, Figuera. Would you like to make an motion to move? 10.1 and 10.2?
Upon recommendation from the superintendent, I make a motion to move items 10.1 and 10.2.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have questions or comments from the board on 10.1 and 10.2?
Yes, I do. I would like and hope that Mr. Strelachi will reapply for that position and come back to the board. That's a resounding, we all hope that you do that, Mr. Strelachi. The second thing I would like to say is, for 10.2, I think that Allison has done a great job with Shank Price, so I hope that people consider that.
For clarification on 10.2, it's the amending of the words, to remove the words from accept special education files, those were to be turned over to the new firm. Do we need to put clarification for anyone on, on the agenda then, or the resolution for anyone?
I'm not understanding what you're asking me.
So the 10.2, the amendment was to correct the wording from the prior resolution. It says to remove the words, except special education files, with the intent was for the, all files to be moved over to the new law firm.
That's clear.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear. Do we have any other questions or comments? No, we'll take a roll call then. Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes on 10.1, no on 10.2.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
And at this time, we are going to open it up to public comments. We just ask that you be respectful if we have a large population tonight that wishes to speak at the mic. All students, parents, and employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive and obscene comments will not be tolerated. And again, please just be respectful. We do not have a timeline limit on speaking, but we just would like you to be aware that we have a large room tonight that may wish to speak. Anyone is welcome. And just also speak clearly into the mic so that it's picked, being picked up as well.
Tim Capone, Highfield Road, Flanders. I'm here not to talk about Mr. Geppert, the welcome, but to speak about HIPAA. I sent an email to all of the board members. I have been trying to get answers in regards to a number of my questions, starting with why our HIPAA policies aren't followed, not even pretend to be followed. Investigations are, you know, when you report something, it has 24 hours that they're supposed to initiate the HIPAA. I made a HIPAA complaint on the 14th, and it was initiated on February 22nd. Okay? And this has been an ongoing practice for more than a year, starting last March, when I went to administrator and made a complaint that multiple staff members were harassing my child. Okay, I made that complaint, nothing was done, no investigation was initiated. So I went up the chain of command to summon, and I reported it there, who was also a mandatory reporter. Okay, and nothing was done. So my question to you is, the audio recording of that, where I told her it was harassment and she did nothing with it, who am I supposed to be turning that over to? Who is doing that investigation? Who is going to look into the fact that there are four administrators in this district that have not followed the HIPAA policy? And I have ample documentation, ample documentation from every single one, that they don't follow timelines, that they don't investigate, okay? And that I even have emails from them that says they're not going to investigate, okay? Then they tell me they are going to investigate because of the old council, okay, told them that they had to, okay? And the person that does the investigation is the person that already told me they weren't going to investigate, who's obviously conflicted, if they've already predetermined that no HIPAA has occurred. So that, those are my questions. What's going to be done and who's going to be conducting this investigation? Because, again, I have an auto record, audio recording, I have other documentation that goes along with this, okay? And this is, you know, I came to this, well, not this board, I came to the board last year, okay, and made a similar request, and nothing was done. Nothing was done. Okay, so, again, those are the answers I'm looking for. You're all aware, you have the documentation, it's on your server, all of these things can be pulled. Our children need to be protected, and the fact that you have four administrators, four that have done nothing, that have covered it up for almost a year. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The board is aware that there is an act of HIPAA investigation ongoing at this time. We are not permitted to comment on that, and obviously, we follow all of the HIPAA statutes, regulations, and policies in doing our investigations and making our determinations, and we continue to do so. As far as any other comments that you make, feel free to provide it to the board, and the board will look into the matter under the board's policies and the applicable law, and will follow through on what they need to do. Thank you again for your comments.
Karen Fumaro, 133, Flanders, Drakestown Road. I'm going to start off by saying I wholeheartedly hope that Mr. Strelachi will interview for the position. I think that that was a very sad way to, to see him head out, but, given last meeting's ending, I'm less concerned about the change in attorney representation than I am the timing in execution. I'll leave my comments on execution for another day, but timing is definitely a head-scratcher. Considering the attorney contract renewal and/or RFP has happened three times in 20 months, where everyone except Mr. Robinson voted yes in June of '22, everyone voted yes in June of '23, and everyone voted yes in November of '23, except for an absent member, I'm curious if the timing of an abrupt resolution has anything to do with the upcoming case against the Board of Ed, which was supposed to be heard on February 16th, but on February 1st was moved to March 28th. There has been chatter on Facebook about a taxpayer-funded large sum settlement in addition to hundreds of thousands of dollars of legal fees. I'm confused, because I've asked on multiple occasions specifically about the cost of the lawsuit from our previous administrator. Each time I've asked, I've understood the response to be that the taxpayers have footed the bill for a $10,000 deductible and the remaining costs are covered by insurance. Presumably, we wouldn't settle before the upcoming March court date, which would be a taxpayer-funded settlement, when the insurance company would be responsible if the case is lost. Am I misunderstanding the previous responses to my inquiries? Where are these claims of huge settlement costing taxpayer money coming from? Do some in the community know more than others about a settlement outside of insurance that will cost the taxpayers some unknown high amount? And is the information on Facebook misrepresenting the truth, or is the truth that there is a taxpayer-funded settlement on the horizon? I believe the taxpayers of Mount Olive deserve to know if the board is in fact pursuing a legal settlement that will be paid out of taxpayer funds. I sincerely appreciate any clarification and insight on the matter. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gita Vogel, 48 June Grass Way, Panther Valley, Hackettstown. I am proudly the certified field rep from OESA, and was very interested in their report tonight, something they totally believe in, our children. I would like to refer to my statements when the new board was elected, hoping for unity. So to spare you all, I won't reread it, but I will say, please, please, for all that you stand for, Ms. Narcisse, thank you so much for that inspiring comment. I know you spoke for yourself and for what you wish for the board, and I can only say, I've been now in Mount Olive five years. It's my adopted community. I'm very proud of our administrators, our teachers, and of course, the kids. So I too hope for the unity that you spoke of, Ms. Aquino. I hope we can all make it happen. Best wishes to you, sir, as the new council.
Thank you.
Martin Wells, Lawrence, Queens, Upper West Side, New Jersey. I sent some notes to some of the board members about, my son brought something for ROKAP, but there was some archaeological find on our ground at the school, and the Archaeological Society is trying to work somehow at the school to start this archaeological dig, and I don't know if it's brought to the board or superintendent, but my son came back from the ROKAP meeting very early today, said, well, this is exciting, that they can do an archaeological dig somewhere on our grounds. Something was discovered by someone, what that is, I don't know, but my son said it was really sad if it doesn't improve. Seniors that are here this year would have an opportunity to participate in this adventure. And if it doesn't get approved by the board to help with the Archaeological Society, it would not occur. I don't know if any of you have been aware of this, Dr. Ban, or anything else, but I'd like to make it, you aware, because ROKAP is aware of it, and my son came home really stoked about it, and it would be nice if we could find out a little bit more about it so we can progress this, so some of the seniors that are here now can take part in this. You know, my son will be a senior next year, so hopefully by now, we definitely, hopefully take part for two years worth of it. But I don't know if any of the administrators, Dan, or any of the ones who've heard about this, but i- if we can find out a little bit more about this and get it approved, to give these kids something exciting to do, and dig up legally the arts of Mount Olive School grounds, I think it'd be pretty cool. And I want to say welcome to the new council, it's refreshing that I don't have to ask the old council to resign, so I'll welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment? Can you just share some information with Dr. Ban? Not now, like just an email or something? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carrie Tortorello Cook. I was actually born and raised here, so there's a lot of familiar faces. I have a child in elementary school, a child at the middle school, and a child at the high school. First, I want to say my kids love the teachers, love the staff, love Mount Olive, and we've been very happy up until recently. And I do have to say this out loud, because I did go down the social media rabbit hole recently, which I'm not proud of, but I did. But I have to say at the very beginning of this, that this is not, I'm not here to debate whether or not hiring a lawyer was good or a bad decision, and a lot of grown adults in this room cannot understand that that's not what I'm doing. So, now with that, I'm not a public speaker, as you can tell, so I'm going to read something, my thoughts, my little glasses. Oh, I'm shaking. Our community came together last year, and we were blasted day after day, social media post after social media post. Someone was at every board meeting convincing us that we needed a changing of the guard, new fresh faces, new perspectives, and new people on the Board of Ed. I personally think there were some great points and ideas, and I always try to see both sides of an argument before making a decision. I'll admit, although I don't love change, I know that change can be good. Let remind, remind everyone what those things were, that people were fighting so very hard for, and what their issues were with our old Board of Ed. They were that the board was fragmented, there were fractions working independently of the rest of the board, that we needed more transparency, we needed honesty, and that we wanted a unified Board of Ed, and above all, we wanted a positive change. So for the past year, we have replaced most of our Board of Education members. New members promised honesty, integrity, and transparency. Please note for the record, I'm not only pointing a finger at the only, at the most recently appointed Board of Ed members. Everyone was under the impression that this would be the year, the year of changing for the better, the year of honesty, the year of transparency, and most of all, the year for a unified Board of Ed. Now, two months into 2024, it seems that you have done the exact opposite of what was promised. Correct me if I'm wrong, however, I believe the process is supposed to be that if there's a topic for the board to vote on, the board discusses it in a closed session and then moves to put it on the agenda for a vote. I would think this would be to benefit everyone who's currently seated on the board, especially those who are less trained in education or certain areas of expertise. If the board had been able to discuss, the, what the, I mean, I'm talking about the law firm thing. If they were able to discuss it properly, then you all could have shared details and opinions to make sure everyone was going into the vote with accurate information. This could have also ensured that people weren't voting based on emotions instead of facts. Perhaps you could have had the chance that someone would have heard something they didn't know before and vote differently. Why wouldn't the select board members who were bringing this to the vote follow that process that is set in place? Why wouldn't you want all members of the board to be in on the decision-making, to be in the know of the reasons why, and above all else, to work as a team to make the best decision for our community? I thought this board wanted to make the very best and honest decisions moving forward. I'm honestly very confused, and I really felt so sad for the other members of the board who seemed blindsided at the last meeting. One more side. Also, to be clear, I don't want to hear about this, how this has happened in the past, and, and why was it okay then, when they did it behind others' back? If it did happen in the past, it wasn't okay then, and it's not okay now. Remember when you were like five and your parents used to say, two wrongs don't make it right? I mean, come on, guys. Oh, God, I can't stop shaking. Everyone claims they want, they want change, and they want to be part of the change. They don't want it to be the way it was in the past. If that's the case, then why on earth would you do the exact thing that you wanted to stop? It actually blows my mind. Do you not have respect for Ms. Melendez, Ms. Fitzgerald, Ms. Aquino, and Mr. Strelachi? Are they not worthy to sit here on the board with you and be part of the decision-making process? Have they not earned their spots? Because they seem like pretty smart people, and they were voted by the community just like the rest of you. I want to reiterate something again, this has nothing to do with the decision of whether or not to fire or keep the law firm. Maybe it was for the better, maybe it wasn't. I can't comment, comment on that, because I don't know enough, and it wouldn't be honest. Instead, this has everything to do with the process, or lack thereof, from which this plan came to fruition. I'm sure some of you will say that you had no idea this was being brought to the table, and if that's the honest truth, then as a board member with the community's best interests at hand, I'd like to know why you wouldn't table last week's vote until the entire board could get together to discuss such a huge decision. So I'm here now to let you know, our Board of Education, that members of our community are now uncertain about how this newly-elected board will move forward, especially with big decisions. How are you actually going to be the change that you promised? How am I or the community supposed to believe that moving forward, the topics on which the board is to vote on, haven't already been voted on by a select faction of the board? Listen, we all make mistakes, and we learn from them. I personally I personally like to apologize when I make a mistake, and I would hope that you could self-reflect on what I'm saying here tonight and perhaps see where you went wrong. I would like to think this was a misunderstanding and shouldn't be a reflection on how the board will move forward. Remember, you're here to vote on our community's best interests, and as a board member, you are obligated to put aside your personal feelings and vote for what's best for M. L. Mr. Strelachi, I really do hope you run again, although I'm not sure if it's already voted on by close doors. I hope not. And I hope you have a chance, because along with new changes, you can't beat experience, and I think everyone has a lot to learn. So that's it.
Kevin Stansbury, president of the Mount Olive Administrators and Supervisors Association. How far that candle throws its beam, so shines good deeds in a divided world. I just wanted to take this opportunity to endorse Tony Strelachi for the open seat. Your journey's not finished yet. You have so much more to accomplish in finishing out that term, and who knows what happens after that. But as a member of the association, I want to definitely give my gratitude and appreciation to the support that this gentleman has given this district for thirty years. Thirty years. And to dismiss those contributions would be a crime. Thank you.
Tim Helberg, thirty-four Saunders Lane, and a former Board of Ed member. So I have sat behind that seat, so your comments were well said. I don't expect everybody to always say yes. I wouldn't. I was on a board. We did not always agree, but we did always talk. And so she took most of my comments, but I just want to point out, which is, we had walk-on resolutions as well, but we had walk-on resolutions when it was discussed at the time, and they always passed nine-zero if that was the case. We never passed a walk-on resolution that had, was not agreed upon. So what, you guys asked for the agenda to be provided last meeting. You asked for the agenda to be provided to you actually earlier, which is a problem in the fact that you want to have as much on the possible agenda as possible, but being in your shoes, I do understand there's a lot of work done on the weekends. But what this means is, since the agenda was published on Friday, and this was a walk-on resolution on Monday, that means Mr. Orzillo decided over the weekend to write a, write a resolution. Because if he didn't, back to the previous comment, you aren't following policy. The policy, I should say policy is probably a strong word because I don't know that it's actually written down, but it sure as hell is common courtesy, which says you will provide this to the public to be able to see and comment on it and attend the meeting, which obviously people are doing this time around. So Mrs. Fenton brought up, has actually submitted a pro se petition that said you wanted to know when Mr. Ziddermer read a resolution without having it in front of the public, and yet here was a resolution that was not done in front of the public, and you voted yes for it. So I'm very, a little confused on that, why that would be so important to file it earlier but not on this situation. Similar to what was said before, several board members did run on the honesty and integrity. And I don't know about anybody else, because many of us are in business. I've submitted RFPs. I requested RFPs. When I request an RFP, the R results come back, we then interview, we review the results, whatever. There were five applications that were submitted back in October for the last RFP. At that time, there were people that reviewed it and voted on it. Since that time, no one has interviewed those candidates. I know this because I asked about it. I checked into, when was the last time the board did interviews? When was the last time board members reviewed the RFP? And they haven't been. So three members that were not on this board at all voted yes to switch it. And again, it is your right to do so. I agree with the comment. It is not the fact that you did it. It is a little, because I've worked with Mr. Ziddermer for some of those twenty years, and I've never had a problem with him, but that's a different story. It is technically your right. However, what isn't right is following the, not following the process. You have a line in your Code of Ethics that says, "Confining his/her board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them." Since Mr. Ziddermer certainly didn't know about it, I'm pretty sure he didn't do that. Since a number of the board members didn't seem to know about it, I'm pretty sure he didn't do that either. You have a board attorney that has worked for the board for twenty years, with no discussion to the attorney, his firm, fellow board members, with three of you having no actual knowledge of the ongoing situations in front of the board other than one month of public service, with purposely avoiding the possibility of having public comments, with knowing you were in the middle of a significant effort with a disgruntled employee, and that's all he is, is a disgruntled employee. You can like him or not, and again, I'm not pretty to it, but that's what he is. Five, you voted on a motion that you didn't place on the agenda. One has to wonder, back to similar comments, if there are artillery motives behind these decisions? I don't know. But you didn't want any of the facts and information to be out there. Where does that fit in the line with the Code of Ethics that says, "Make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of the children"? Thank you.
Past two people stole my stuff. Brian Gallagher, one-three-five Crenshaw Drive. Yeah, so with so many theories and information online and person, I wanted to talk about a few of the recent topics going around that greatly affect the district. One recent topic receiving a lot of discussion in the public was the decision at the February twelfth board meeting to vote on a resolution proposed by board member Mark Orzillo to terminate the then-existing contract with the district's law firm and appoint a new one. One point I saw afterwards was people asking, is anyone wondering why the resolution wasn't tabled, comparing it to the tabling of a separate action item that same night, one which was intended to change the public commentary portion of meetings to have a four-minute speaking limit per person? It's a great question that deals with two very important issues. One, the public's right to have a say in district matters, and two, how the board operates under New Jersey's Code of Ethics for school board members, so I'd like to speak about it. Let's consider the two actions being compared. First, with the action that was proposed to change the public speaking portion of board meetings to a four-minute limit. At some point prior to the February twelfth meeting, board members talked about changing the public comment section of its bylaws to create a limit of four-minute speaking time during public commentary. It obviously gained a majority of support from the board to be then taken to the next step. The next step for this possible change was to go through policy committee. Committees are specific members assigned from within the board to further discuss and streamline the proposal and drafting process. They would then draft the necessary changes to be voted on at the next meeting in a first reading. It is possible that steps one and two can be reversed, not affecting the overall process. The draft was then added to the agenda, which is published prior to the meeting. Members of the public are then able to view the agenda to understand that this is a topic that will be covered and possibly acted on. Seeing this specific item, some people decided there was concern over it and wished to voice their opinion. At the board meetings, it is required as part of New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, aka Sunshine Law, that the board sets aside time for public to comment on matters that would affect them. This is a protected right. During public comment for action items on February twelfth, myself and others got up and spoke with opposition to this proposed action before the board would have voted on it. Upon hearing it and considering the public's insight, the board then decided, because of that input, to table the action item for further discussion. NJSA, or better known as the School Ethics Act, contains a Code of Ethics for school board members. The gentleman just read the one I was going to read. It states, "I will confine my board action policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted with those who will be affected by them." What we just listed was a perfect example of the process being done properly and working successfully to make sure that the rules, policy matters are inclusive of all people affected following ethical guidelines. The policy proposal made it through committee, which means the board favored it. The action item came with the recommendation of the superintendent, as noted on the agenda, but the final decision to table the item was decided specifically because the public was given a chance to voice opposition to it, or right, which the board reflected on. Let's now compare this process to the resolution proposed by Mr. Orzillo. Mr. Orzillo's resolution proposal did not start similarly with step one as the previous example did. We know this because board members express alarming concern over having no idea why it was being proposed at the time, not knowing or being given crucial information and changes being proposed for the vote, not even a basic reason to why it was being proposed overall. The resolution proposed by Mr. Orzillo did not follow similarly to step two of the previous example. We know this because it would have come out of a committee properly drafted as an action item. The resolution proposed by Mr. Orzillo did not follow similarly to step three of the previous example. We know this because it would have been added to the board agenda that's made available for the public to view and further form opinions of agreeing or opposing it, knowing they could show up at the meeting to comment on it, as we've established is their right. Mr. Orzillo's resolution stated, quote, "The board has determined that it no longer wishes the law firm of Shank Price Smith and King Ellissey to represent it. However, the board is representative of the public, so Mr. Orzillo has no ground to speak on behalf of the board as a whole or a majority when proving he and others did not fully discuss or allow discussion of the matter in interest with other board members and the public." The resolution proposed by Mr. Orzillo did not follow similarly to step four of the previous example. This, I believe, is the most egregious and blatant form of circumventing the ethical process. After Mr. Orzillo read the proposed resolution that night, board president Lisa Narcisse stated she would open the proposal for discussion to the board. However, while the board was discussing the matter, she then noted on record into the microphone, quote, "No public comment," end quote, failing to allow the public to be involved in a matter that affects every one of us as taxpayers and concerned citizens of Mount Olive. The four-minute rule example, which many have commented is such a non-factor, or who cares, because people never come to board meetings anyway, was tabled specifically because the board heard input from the public and decided it was in the best interest to further discuss. But we see the opposite with Mr. Orzillo's resolution. The fact that a proposal to make a major significant change that affects the legal protections of the board and district, which is currently involved in multiple lawsuits as it defended, with large financial interests at stake impacting the district's future, could be snaked through with some eleventh-hour blindside to various board members, the district, and its employees and community, should be a concern for everyone. Now seeing that members seated here are willing to put aside their ethical standards and care for the public and students of this district, focusing on maybe interests of others. If the matter truly spoke for the board and everyone was informed in agreement, why not add it to the agenda and follow the simple procedures required by ethics and standards? Whether you agree with the resolution or not isn't the issue at hand. We should be worried that this seated board is willing to use these types of circumventing measures to push through policy and changes without properly discussing with anyone and everyone affected. Another troubling part to this resolution proposed by Mr. Orzillo is that it unravels a process that was carefully taken to initially solicit RFPs, RFPs in the fall, and now turns contract, and now in turn contracts a different law firm with one uninformed vote at the last board meeting. On October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, the Mount Olive Board of Education provided advanced written notice to the Daily Record for publication of a special meeting to be held on November second, two thousand twenty-three. On October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, Mount Olive Board of Education provided advanced written notice of the same upcoming meeting and delivered to the six district schools, BOE offices, municipal building, and Mount Olive library. Both written notices stated that discussion will be limited to interviews for professional service providers as per an October tenth RFP request for proposal. At the November second meeting, Mount Olive Board of Education held public comment for community members to address the stated topic of the meeting as provided in its previous notices. The board then adjourned to confidential session for a purpose of interviewing professional service providers. After reconvening, the Mount Olive Board of Education held a second public commentary for action items. Board member Ms. Jennifer Aquino read out loud the two action items on the agenda for consideration and public comment. The Board of Ed then voted, after motion by Ms. Aquino and second motion by Anthony Giordano, on action item five-point-one, appointment of board attorney. The final resolution was motion carried by unanimous vote. People asked multiple times for the district over the past year or so to go out for RFPs, RFPs for vendors at multiple board meetings, saying that's the correct process, which they are correct in saying. So the process is done accordingly, yet here we are with a backdoor resolution voted through to undo that whole process. We're all the people that were crying about process, process, the process needs to be done fairly now. It's pretty strange that they're all silent, wondering what the connection could be there. Maybe they weren't happy about the process results and now revel in the unethical result. One last note, I want to thank all the people of the town for coming out tonight. I'm glad you did because that line would have looked really embarrassing. And hopefully continuing to do so. It's not always about getting up here and speaking. You'll find that just attending and listening can provide a lot of insight into not only how the schools operate, but how you truly feel about the issues, and you'll start to see how they have a major impact. And if you do get up to speak, it could be nerve-wracking, but it's worth it if what you believe, if you believe what you're saying, to be honest and genuine. I began speaking at these meetings only a year or so ago. I was immediately met with claims that I read other people's talking points, had information fed to me, or didn't write my own words. I still laugh knowing that that's the immediate panic it caused some. I take pride in every word that I've written or spoken here. They're all mine, as much as that may disappoint some. I stated multiple times that I'm happy to ever apologize if I'm wrong or misspeak, regardless of the tactics used to try and intimidate me. Soon after I began talking, I was met with instances where board president Lisa Narcisse cold-called my neighbor, asking for information about me and who I was, kind of a, what's the deal with this guy? I felt more concerned for my neighbor being caught off guard by someone he's never spoken to before rather than myself. It's horrible that someone could be dragged into some unfair private investigation of sorts. And it didn't stop there. She also felt that he contacted another person who lives in town and works with my wife, asks the same questions about myself and my wife. Not sure what people are looking for out there, but there's nothing there. It's sad that my questions and concerns for the students and members of this community are met with panic by some. Maybe they have more to hide than I do. For the people of Mount Olive, please don't get discouraged by the tactics taken by this and previous board members or others in the public to quiet you from being heard. If you're here tonight for the first time, but for the first time in a while, please don't make it the last. Thank you.
I come here as well to talk about the appointing of the lawyer. I have a difference stance, is that three board members here filed litigation against the district, where Shanken Price was the attorney of record. You three were in an adversary position against our lawyer and should have removed yourself from the vote. Actually, it was only two. So I am a, I started on this board, and when I was on this board, I was lied about under verification of sworn oath. I have lost family members. I have lost friends, all because people keep putting out falsehoods, constantly badgering people on Facebook with falsehoods. Mrs. Finaira, you are right. Most litigation is handled by the insurance company with a $10,000 deductible. Only lawsuits against the district were handled by Shanken Price, and their crime was winning. Okay? Again, I walk around, I don't know how people feel about me, because people have lied. Okay? I have one individual who was screaming that I caused excessive tax dollars used for lawyers. And here you are, appointing another lawyer that now has to get up to speed on all these different cases. What cost is that? What is, is the billable rate more than Shanken Price? So this individual said, that's why I'm here. He had to open his mouth and say that I caused this stuff. The truth of the matter is honesty and accountability is what causes most of this problem, or the lack of it. Okay? You two filed pro se notions, Mrs. Mrs. Narcisse, Mrs. Fanning, Mrs. Fanning, you withdraw yours, and I'm for defamation. Because in your pro se argument, you stated that I, during a closed session, purposefully filed ethics charges to invoke the doctrine of necessity. No, I didn't, Mr. Wells Muller.
Mr. Zaire.
Actually, that ethics charge has been substantiated and is moving to the next level. Okay? So. Man, I'm sorry. I am just sick of this. I'm shaking. Because this is the stuff. I'm shaking because this is the stuff, the falsehoods. I know you didn't make that up because I was approached to do the exact same thing. Okay? This board has been so corrupt, and you blame us for being the corrupt people. All I did in my crime was voting exactly the same way seven other people did. And then people came back and lied, under sworn oath.
Does anyone else think that I can speak for the public?
It's a little strange being on this side of the mic after 30 years, but... First, I want to thank all the people who have contacted me. I just cannot believe how many people have contacted me, wished me well, and asked me to reapply. I want to tell them my deepest gratitude and my most humility that they have contacted me. I also want to apologize to the board for my outburst at the last meeting. I feel it's unbecoming of a board member, at least for me. You know, I've served on the board for 30 years, and over the past two years, it's been very, very unsettling. And during that time, let's look at our staff. Our staff never wavered. They kept performing their duties and kept teaching our kids at a high level. We've worked very hard to make this a good school system. We're ranked very high in the state. We're very high in the nation. I'd hate to see it torn down. What this board has to do is it has to talk to one another. It has to disagree, but it has to respect one another. And it has to be unified. If you continue with five, four votes, you will be an ineffective board. So what you should do is make sure you talk to one another, you heard about, all night long about the process. You really have to put it together, folks, because if you don't, you're going to regress. We certainly don't want to see that. I want to just leave you with this one thought. That we came out, we coined a motto many, many years ago. And I leave you with this thought: Children are our first priority. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. I do intend to reapply.
Do we have anyone else from the public who would like to speak? No? Okay. And with that, we will move on to old business. Do we have any old business from the board?
I do.
Thank you.
I hate to beat a dead horse, but I want to read a little something. "I felt important to say that a few months ago, at the end of October, the prior board, including three current board members, myself, Mrs. Melendez, and Mrs. Fenton, interviewed law firms after going out for RFP. We narrowed the search down to three firms, interviewed all three, and unanimously chose Shank Price. The firm that is sitting here now had no votes, no offense, Mr. Gephardt. So I'm hoping someone on the board could explain to me how we didn't go back out for RFPs, we didn't include the full board in any decision-making, and how you hired a new firm without ever meeting with or interviewing this new firm." Thank you.
Anyone else from the board with old business? Yes?
I do.
Thank you.
I just want, um... I'm going to read from the NJSBA, which is our organization who lead board education's ethics and conduct, that relations to other board members is important. Says promote the board working as a team, not as individual. Expect full attendance and preparedness for board meetings. And that means be informed what is going to be discussed at the meetings. Communication can do it. Communication is critical, not to five, to the full body of the board, nine members. Build consensus. There is no such a thing as president doesn't have to build consensus because it's there in our ethics guideline. Build consensus so everyone gets their say. Get their say, not in dark, opportunity to speak, but may not get their way, and that's okay, as long as they are given the opportunity to speak and are informed what is going to be discussed. Encourage open expression of opinions by extending fairness and courtesy to all. Sadly, that was not given to us last time. Focus members on issues, not personalities. And model a higher standard of ethical conduct. Will you do that, president and vice president, and new members, and we all? That's all.
Any other, any other old business? No? All right, we'll move on to new business. Any new business from the board? Anyone? I have three items I'd like to put before the board. We could take them away for next time, and I know we've discussed this multiple times maybe. Can we look into some, Dr. Fang, I know we've mentioned this, look into putting a section on our website that specifically speaks to the board members' website, polling information from NJSBA on rules, ethics, processes, how the board is supposed to operate, how the board operates, how unfortunately sometimes the public doesn't always have, you know, knowledge of what occurs. I'd like to then also...
Would you speak close to the make?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'd also like to put, maybe it's more for policy, but look to see if there is the opportunity to make a dedication for either for our PAC or whether it's some other manner to honor Mr. Strelachi and his dedication to the arts in this community for over 30 years. I'd like the board to look into that. And then I'd also like to look into whether we can see if we can put in writing, because I know this has been just a past practice, but not in writing, at graduation, if a member of the board or a former member of the board has a senior child or students, multiple, graduating, if they can be honored with handing out diplomas and/or the option to give the board speech as an honorary, you know, whether they be on the board or prior. And that would mean Mr. Zaire, who might have left, has two students that are graduating. We don't need to discuss tonight. I'd just like to see if we can put those before whichever committees are appropriate. Anyone else? So we will move on to the board comments, and we'll start at the end. Mrs. O'Neill, do you have any comments?
Congratulations to the athletes.
Oh, I just said congratulations to the high school champions that the girls announced.
Sure. Mrs. Fink, sure.
I just want to say thank you all for coming out. This is the most, we had to add chairs. That's amazing. So thank you guys for coming out. We really appreciate you and the interest you're taking in our community. That's all.
I echo what the teacher said. Thank you so much for coming out. This is important, and we appreciate every time and everyone that speak up because we listen. We listen, and we like to see this place full every time because every one of us has something to bring, which is good for our students and for our community also.
No comment.
Well, okay, we'll go back. Mr. Orzillo, down on this end. Any comments?
No comments.
All right, Ms. Figuerer?
Nothing from me.
All right, we'll circle back to you, Ms. Fenton.
All right, well, I just want to say congratulations to all the high school sports and everything that all these schools are doing. I think it's amazing. I do want to appreciate everybody coming out, and I wish we would see more people and more people because this is important. And it's a shame that the only time people come out is when it's negative. I would love to see this group out here when we're doing good things as well. I love people speaking. I love to hear what you have to say. It's important. So, thank you.
Okay, we'll circle out with me. I'd like to say first of all, congratulations to all of our high school sports teams. I was just telling someone, I can't even remember how many, and they're all having, you know, state championships this weekend, from our indoor track to our swimming to our wrestling. And I also want to say thank you to our staff that hosted our wrestling regional tournament this weekend. You don't realize how much goes into that from our janitors to our security, to our AD and our, you know, high school staff. The place was, you know, filled. It's a lot of work, but it's very much rewarding to see the students. Gabby, I hate to single you out, but I know, congratulations. That's a big, and I also want to say the ROTC program. I've had multiple members of our public and our, you know, student staff come up and tell us how wonderful of a program it is. And you were singled out as being a wonderful mentor, so thank you. You know, I also want to, you know, say thank you for our administrative staff. I know that you've hung in there, you support our students on a day-to-day basis, and I know that you strive to do your very best every day as well and make a difference every single day. I hope you improve just a little bit, just, just a little bit. And, you know, we do take lessons away from everyone. Mr. Gallagher, I wish you could have heard actually that I had leaned over to the attorney and asked, "Is there a public comment?" And he said, "No public comment," and I asked, "No public comment." So I'm sorry that that piece was only picked up on the mic because that was what I actually had asked the question of, again, leaning on my attorney for the advice for the board of how to proceed with a meeting. That is what we do. Thank you for those who like to challenge me. It helps me grow as an individual and as a board member. I don't back down. The only thing I do request is that those leave comments about my children out of it. This is business. So when I ask about an individual as to why they're questioning or bringing up topics about my children, we may have families here, but when we sit here, this is, you know, about the district, not about our children, as well as those who harass us in other manners. It is not called for, and that is not what being a board member or an elected official is about. On top of that, though, again, I want to say thank you, though, for you to come out, and I would like you to come out when we have negative and positive things. I like hearing from all of you, and I will say, "Hi, Mr. Gales. Dr. Gales, you always did, you know, teach me probably the most. I see you back there. Thank you for attending." "Mr. Strelachi, I look forward to sitting next to you again, hopefully." And I hope that we can take away some of the comments from the public and, again, always improve, and I do hope that we could maybe teach everyone too about this role in the manners that we're allowed to. So making a piece of the website available for the public to understand a little bit more what this seat, you know, entails. Thank you. All right, we are going to... Yep? All right, so be it resolved the board will meet in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege, pending or anticipated litigation, confidential pupil matters, real estate matters, and be it further resolved that the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Action may be taken.
This is Aquino.
Paul's here.
Mrs. Fenton.
Here.
Mrs. Figuera.
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald.
Here.
Mrs. Melendez.
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil.
Here.
Mr. Orzillo.
Here.
Mrs. Larcis.
Here. Um, we, I'm, I have made motion to close out this meeting.
So moved.
Anybody else? Second? All right. Oh, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Oh, let's go to, let's get out.